Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. I would ask that everybody please silence your cellphones and then stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance is to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite Pastor Mick Matthews from the Lutheran Church in Pine Top. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure to ask God's blessing upon this meeting. Lord God, when you made Solomon king after his father David, Solomon prayed for an understanding heart to judge your people, to discern between good and evil. Give that same spirit of wisdom and understanding that you once gave to Solomon to all those who rule in our day, especially to the officials of our town. Help them to promote what is good and to stand against what is evil. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor. Item B on our agenda tonight is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct to staff to study the matter for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during call to the public. I have no requests, but is there anybody that wants to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council has a question. Council members may ask, excuse me, a member of town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion and council members may ask questions at any time. Items removed are considered in their normal sequence as listed. We've got two items on our consent agenda tonight. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members however may be directed to staff or member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is a public hearing, discussion and consideration of resolution number 25-1769, rescinding resolution number 91-253, and all succeeding resolutions, accepting roadways within the incorporated boundaries of the town for maintenance, rehabilitation, upgrading programs based on categories 1, 2, and 3, and consider ordinance number 25-480, adopting an additional chapter to Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places by adding Chapter 12.26 Town of Pine Top Lakeside Road Maintenance. Matt, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening Mayor and council. Tonight I bring front of you is how we've been operating for the last 10 years and we've been going through all the category roads and trying to figure out exactly which ones are ours, which ones aren't ours. We had a weird category called courtesy maintenance roads, which caused a lot of confusion. So basically they were private roads that at some point were accepted throughout the process and we weren't supposed to spend any money on them, but we were supposed to help when needed or I think the intent originally was if we have a major snowstorm or we have a major flood, there was room for me to help those citizens. However, we have that with you guys. If we have an issue of an emergency of that size, we have the ability to do those kind of things. So we don't need to confuse the citizens with a courtesy maintenance road that we can't really do anything with. So it puts their road on a list that's not really anything to be proud of. So what we have tonight is we've taken everything that I have been doing for the last 10 years and basically put it all into the Chapter 26 and formalized it so that there's an easy way for the public to follow how to get a road into our road maintenance, what the requirements are, and the petition to do so and all that information. Because as it stands right now, basically they just show up and ask for you to put it in. And we would like to change that to where there's actually a process to do that. It's basically what this comes down to. There's a lot of, lot here to go over, but I kind of was gonna leave it up to you guys on what you wanted to ask and how you wanted to go from here.
So it sounds like what we're doing is making it where they have to bring it up to our standards so that we can maintain it properly and have it comply with everything else.
Yeah, exactly. Just like we do the subdivision code or anywhere else, or any subdivision that we do is exactly that way. However, where this comes in play is when you have wildcat subdivisions and you have roads that are not built to the subdivision standards and it causes these type of issues.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Matt tonight?
I do have questions.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So this doesn't just include paved roads, does it also include if somebody wants a gravel road to?
Exactly. So we have a standard. It's basically the same as our paved roads except without the AC, without the asphalt, which allows them for future improvement to the asphalt level, but we will only maintain it at the level that's existing. And then it takes it a step farther, whereas in the past, how it was done is you broke down the town into different sections and then you maintain those sections. That's how it's always been done as long as I've been in this business. However, in the last about five to 10 years, a lot of technology has changed and now we do a lot more, do the right pair at the right time. Obviously, funding's gotten tight and so we, as road guys, we've had to come up with better ways to maintain our systems than the past ways, which were the block type of maintaining. So now what we do is we do a PCI rating and we scan the entire town for a minimal cost and then we know exactly where our failures are on every road and then we focus our attention on those type of failures and then fixing those areas. So for example, if your road PCI rating was low, you might need to do some patch repairs with a chip sill over the top of it where another road might just get slurry sill. And so by doing it that way, we break out the whole town and we come up with a seven-year plan and then you guys pass that seven-year plan continuously and then that way we know what we're gonna do for the next five years. We would do that PCI rating before the next five years. We know exactly what that plan looks like. It's gonna change how we do pavement preservation, but I think we've gotta change to what makes more sense. Instead of just throwing money at slurry sills or chip sills, we need to focus on the areas that actually need the chip sill or need the slurry sill. Does that make sense? So it's more of a right time, right repair. They have a lot of different scenes for it, so.
Just follow up, PCI stands for what?
It is?
An index.
Yeah, it's a road rating index and it's basically 1 through 100 and depending on how much cracks you have or the deterioration of the road or the ravelling of the road or the pushing of where the traffic goes, those are all what will adjust that PCI rating. And basically that's how you rate the roads and you determine, the lower the PCI rating, the worse the road it is. Our last pavement preservation was done through a PCI rating. We PCI rated the entire town and then we focused our major repairs to the lower PCI rating roads.
Thanks.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, Matt, good job. I think we need to do something like this. But I had a question about what happens. Evidently, we're going to avoid all the roads that came into the system and reevaluate them, is that right? Are there some roads in the town that don't come up to standards and you don't want to accept them?
Yeah, so there were a few roads in this policy that had, that were category 1 roads, which are, the old policy was basically category 1 road was supposed to be the best road in town, right? It was supposed to be like a Woodland or Woodland Lake Road or Springer Mountain on this side of town. And what they were, we had a few in there that were like Lee Lane where it was an electrical easement. And so our categories made no sense. You could have a dirt road in category 1 and you could have a paved road in category 3. And it didn't, it didn't jive with anything that we use for these type of ratings. So what we're changing to is arterials, collectors, and local streets, which are more in line with the PCI ratings and more in line with most municipalities. Obviously, the category 1, 2, and 3 was created at the beginning of the town and I think it was just kind of thrown together to get that process done, but it didn't really make any sense of why the roads were in those. So we've recategorized the roads to where they belong and that's the way that they'll stay. The only ones that were dropping off are the courtesy roads that we already didn't put any money into. So it made it confusing to the public because we didn't maintain it, but it was on a courtesy list in case there was an emergency. Example would be Hill Drive or the Rim Road. There's sections of the Rim Road that were courtesy maintenance that we've never, we were not supposed to put any dollars into. And so this categorizes those into the right area.
Yeah, I guess what I just wanna try to avoid, if we can, is a lot of angry citizens because they're, they have roads in the town, or they thought they did, were being, thought they were being maintained forever. And all of a sudden, we might say, no, I'm sorry, it's not good enough. We're not gonna do that anymore.
We're talking of very few roads that were in the courtesy maintenance and most of those I've already had the conversations with. A good example of that would be Hill Drive. I've met with all the owners, sent letters to all the owners, explaining to them that I could not make the upgrade. So typically, when they find out about the courtesy maintenance road is when they come in and they want me to do a major repair and I can't. My hands are tied. I can't do anything for them anyways. So I wasn't doing anything to begin with and now we're not doing anything to change that. So any of the roads that have been maintained by the town and our pavement or dirt that our town maintained are going to stay town maintained. The few that were courtesy roads, we aren't working on those roads at this current moment and haven't been for the last five to six years. Once I figured out exactly what roads were ours, which took some time, we quit maintaining those courtesy roads. An example of that would be, we've never put AB down on a dirt road. We've very, we didn't blade them very often, if we ever bladed them. Another good example of a road that was on courtesy maintenance was Rock Lane. Have you ever heard of Rock Lane? Well, if you get the chance to go drive it, you'll understand why it's called Rock Lane. It legitimately goes up a rock cliff and there's no material on top of it. There's absolutely nothing I can do with it. They were built to no standards. They were basically power line easements or a road to somebody's house and somehow they got onto this list. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, okay, well, as long as it's kind of minor, that's what I was kind of trying to get.
But most of the courtesy maintenance roads I've met with over the time, we've met with Rim Road, we had a really hard discussion in here about the Rim Road and those citizens are currently working on their piece, that they want to bring up to standards so that I'll take over it. However, we're also there helping them cross those steps off. I've met with Rim Road since our last meeting with Rim Road, probably three or four times. I've helped them get an engineer. I've helped them get in contact with contractors and they are working to a process of actually getting it up to our standards so we can take it over. So most of them understand that there's not a whole lot I can do and I won't, I won't put our equipment in any danger. So I'm not gonna take our blade out and put it on the Rock Lane. That's just not reasonable, right? So we're stuck in this, where we need to get those off our plate.
Okay. So the only other question I had was, how does this work with annexation?
This would be more matching what the county has anyways. So this fits in line with most of the municipalities, the counties, and everybody across the state. Use the collections and the ulterior as ways to designate their roads. So, and we still maintain at the same level. So let's say we were to annex the lakeside area, any of the roads that county are maintaining now would come in and fall under those categories and we would continue maintenance. Is that?
Okay, so would we drop a lot of, possibly though, the roads that we're annexing or not?
No, we wouldn't drop them. If they were maintained by the county, we would continue that maintenance.
Okay.
This really comes down to private roads. The, we shouldn't even be on them to begin with.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking private.
And that's, I guess what I'm trying to say is the courtesy maintenance road were private roads that we should not even be on. And there was only a handful of them. Not even, maybe five or six of them throughout the whole town that were adopted. Another good example of one would be Eastway and Westway. Those are part of an easement that is for the commercial businesses along there. There's nothing we can do, nor have we ever been able to do anything on those roads. It's basically a access easement to the businesses, but we have no ability to fix it or do anything with it, but for some reason it was on the courtesy maintenance. And if we were to do anything, we would need all of the owner's permission because we don't own the right of way and we don't have any, we don't have any right to even be in there. So that's what we're cleaning up. We had to hunt through, it took Catherine and I probably six years to get to this point. Every single road in town, we had to verify what easement was on it, what did it look like, what was it supposed to be, and were we even supposed to be working on it? So that's how we've gotten to this point. It wasn't like, we just picked through it, we went through and made sure that all the right of ways were right. If it had right of way and it was a public dedicated road, it is not coming off our maintenance list.
I thought you started this on Monday.
No.
Just kidding.
No.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
This one was difficult, so.
Well, and I just want to say, I think this gives us a little bit more criteria when we have somebody that comes to us and wants a road to be accepted. So I appreciate you being so proactive on this and I know it's been a lot of work, because I know the meetings with Rim Road, that was really a difficult conversation.
Yes.
And you handled it with a lot of tact. Are there any other questions from the council?
I have two quick questions. One, is it gonna change anything with any of the current projects you have going in some of the neighborhoods? I know there's some over in the top of the woods area or woods they're working on. Is that gonna change anything with those projects?
No, no Counselor Phillips.
And the second question I have is, is this gonna do anything, any concerns for us budgetarily? Is it gonna change anything on the budget?
Nope. This is just basically cleaning up our codes. We have a solid, firm stance to stand on. What would happen right now, if somebody came to the town and said, hey, I want, I want to add this road into the town. They would come to me, we'd go through the process and I would bring it to you and I would say, yes, this is good enough for adoption, let's move forward. Exactly how we've been doing it so far, but that's not the way the code's written right now. The way the code's written right now is they're supposed to come directly to you and get permission to adopt that road. Basically, I'm putting in the proper procedures so that we can go through the process. I can work with those people and help them get to the point where I can take it over and maintain it and then I bring that to you and say, yes, we're good to go on this, or no, I don't think you should move forward with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions for Matt, right, at this point, this is a public hearing, so this is an opportunity for the public to speak on this issue. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments or a motion?
I'll give you a moment.
Vice Mayor?
I move to approve resolution number 25-1769, excuse me, rescinding resolution number 91-253 and all succeeding resolutions.
You made a finish?
That accepted roadways within the incorporated boundaries of town for the purpose of maintenance, rehabilitation, and upgrading programs based on categories 1, 2, and 3, and adopt ordinance number 25-480 approving the addition of Town Code Chapter 12.26 Town of Pine Top Lakeside Road Maintenance to Town Code Title 12.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Safe travels tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Appreciate all that work. We'll move on then to item D2, which is a presentation and update from the White Mountain Nature Center. John Glitzos, come on up.
Thank you. Mayor Irwin, council, I am here representing the White Mountain Nature Center and bringing you up to date on the last couple of months that have been a bit of a struggle for the nature center and telling you how we got through that and then more importantly, painting a picture of the road forward, what we plan to do and what the nature center is going to start meaning even more to the town. And I think you'll really enjoy that part. The subtitle of my slideshow tonight is, How Could You Be So Stupid? We struggled to get through a group of balloon payment mortgages. And you would think, having 10 years of paying on those mortgages every month, you would realize that the balloon was coming up. We did, and I'll explain that to you, but conditions changed at the last moment and put us in a really difficult position. The community stepped up and we are in much better shape than we were. In the beginning, excuse me, the nature center was literally a tent that would get erected on an empty lot. That started in 2004 and stayed pretty much the same until 2015, when we were offered some buildings. Building A, we call it, had been a helicopter repair, an auto junkyard, a waste collection company, and it became the White Mountain Nature Center in 2015. It had a definite garage look and feel. It stayed pretty much the same through 2022. There's an aerial view of the three properties that we'll be mentioning here. Five acres of donated land just north of the nature center, no worry. Then building A, where we hold the Raptor show and a Raptor rehab building, that is our main property. We also purchased buildings, what we call B and C, industrial properties that we leased out to various tenants. That was an interest, both of those were interest-only balloon payment loans that expired at the end of 2024. So the three properties, five acres, the main building A, and buildings B and C, the industrial. We had two interest-only mortgages and they added up to a sizable amount of money, almost $1.2 million. How could we sit there knowing that and not be making preparations to cover what was going to happen? Well, our expectation from our lender, who was a private individual, not a bank, our expectation from our lender that we kept checking on from time to time was that he would continue our mortgages, but he would raise the interest rate a little bit. So from around 2.75% to 5%. That meant our payments were gonna go up by about $3,000 a month and we planned to meet that by starting to charge for the Raptor show, which we've done, remodeling and restocking our store. Our revenue increased by 400%. We put in a POS system and tried and started to track what items were selling best and which ones had the best margins. We started putting in new displays, reworking the entire nature center, and we picked up our effort on memberships. That area was bringing in less than $2,000 per year and last year it jumped up to over $10,000. So those are all ways that we could handle an increase of $3,000 a month. So our goal was, forget about the industrial buildings, sell them off if we needed to, but save the nature center and save the five acres that link the nature center to the hiking trails, big springs, the areas that are important for nature lovers. What actually happened? In late October, early November, the lender told us he would honor the 5% interest rate that we were planning on, but he wanted to increase the principal that we owed on those loans by 350 minimum to $400,000, additional to what we already owed. We were sitting there at 1.2 million and all of a sudden it was gonna be 1.5 to 1.6 million. We figured out that we could not afford it. That's simple. That was too much of an increase and we couldn't handle it and there was no reason for it. So we declined his offer to continue our loans and we put the industrial buildings up for sale. We were very fortunate. A realtor came in that knew what she was doing. She did a wonderful job for us and within weeks, we had three offers, one primary offer and two backup offers. So that is the way we went. We sold that industrial property. The board also stepped up just in case. Sometimes real estate deals don't happen as quickly as you need them to. So just in case, three of our board members each pledged a $100,000 short-term loan in cash and one of our board members donated $50,000 to make sure that we had money to save at least the two properties that I talked about. The community stepped up. We started something we called the Angel Fund and before we knew it, we had $145,000 in donations. It was just spectacular. And it kind of spoke to the need for the nature center and how the town embraces the nature center and wants it to stay as an important part of the community. One of our members literally said, you know what, you're still gonna miss it by a day or two, and offered us a $750,000 cash loan to prevent a foreclosure on December 31st. That was spectacular. And we thank her and her husband, we should thank her every single day, because we ended up having to use that. But in the end, within a couple days of the end of the year, everything was satisfied. We paid off all the mortgages and we were able to pay back the board members that had loaned money and one of our members that had loaned a huge amount. So it all turned out well. We had a mortgage burning and weenie roast in the parking lot, which was a lot of fun, made copies of the mortgages and everybody got to toss in a page or two. Very, very uplifting celebration of making it through. We also started something we call the Guardians of the Nature Center. It's a committee with large donor focus, and they are working on securing large, and especially recurring donations, and we just installed something I invite all of you to come see. It's really spectacular. It's a digital sign, it's a board that stands about that tall, and on it are donor recognition pictures, text that describe all the donations, and rather than saying, well, we're only going to start at ten thousand dollars donated or five thousand dollars, they're putting up five-dollar donations on here. And that sounds incredible, but I'm going to, quick aside, a story. One of the donors that kept coming in and donating more and more money happens to be someone who's a vet tech here in Pinetop, and she was making what she considered extra money from dog sitting, five dollars here, seven dollars there, and she would drive over to the nature center and donate another five dollars to save the nature center. If she wasn't on that board, there was a problem. That's the kind of people we need, and that's what we are so thankful for. So now what? Well, the good news is, we sold those industrial properties. The bad news is, we sold those industrial properties, because they were bringing in lease revenue that we will not have anymore. So our overall revenue, after you take a look at everything, is dropping by about five thousand dollars a month, sixty thousand dollars a year. How are we going to make that up? Excuse me. Well, the way that I've learned to make money really comes from a kindergarten class, believe it or not. That's what they call it. I was an Imagineer at Disney for sixteen years, honorary Imagineer, because I was a contractor. In that time, right at the beginning, they make you go to kindergarten, where you learn the Disney way of getting people to come and come again and come again and love every time that they're at a Disney property or within our stores, whatever. That's where I learned how to make money, and I'm applying it to the nature center now. So let's look at what that means. Our displays and exhibits, we're going to interactive lights and sounds, we're building a sixty-foot diorama with many of the local plants and animals that are here in the White Mountains, and what's going to be extraordinary, we'll look a couple of things. One of them is, we have a taxidermy black bear that arrives tomorrow. If any of you want to help us get it off the truck, we could use some help, it's huge, but it will go up there in that diorama, along with a bald eagle, an elk, a raccoon that's coming. We're going to have all sorts of wonderful creatures, but that's just a display. How do you make it interactive and fun? Well, that's what I did at Disney. Oops, back up. That's what I did at Disney. I made interactive displays inside of locations, stores, and I'm taking that technology and applying it to this. So there will be a big touchscreen that guests can come up to and touch, they can choose one of the animals that's shown on the screen, and let's say they choose the black bear. A light will shine on that black bear instantly, so they'll see where it is up there, and a wooden plaque, it'll look like that, will slide down on the main display, and it will tell them about black bears in the White Mountains. Not, you know, paragraphs, but a few simple bullet points. If they choose the bald eagle, the same thing will happen, and what's really cool, as that happens, there will be audio of that black bear or that bald eagle, so they can match up the physical animal to the sound that it makes and the text that tells about it. So that'll be an incredible museum-quality interactive display. Oops, I did it again. So the next area, our store, has been remodeled. It is, we're monitoring what people are buying and why they're buying it, and we're adding more good inventory. Already, just through that and our POS system, our sales have increased four hundred percent year to year on a monthly basis. We are improving the Raptor Show. I think everybody here has probably heard about the success of the Raptor Show. It's maybe too successful in some areas. We literally have days where we have sixty seats filled, the whole thing is full, extra people come in, five or six, that we can get in safely, and then we turn away forty to sixty more people that are waiting outside. That is how popular it's become, especially in the spring and summer season. Why? Well, we do a couple of things. The animals come very close to the guests, and that is really appreciated by people, and some of these animals are astounding. This is our falcon flying straight up in the air, grabbing something in the air while she's flying upside down and taking it back in her enclosure. This happens every day. We also now have at least five flyovers, where the animals literally fly over the audience, and people love it. You can see the counts, twelve hundred guests in two thousand twenty-two when we got here, up to sixty-four fifty last year, and we are projecting over ten thousand people visiting the Raptor Show this year. That's a big number for Pinetop, Arizona, and we have been told that this is now one of the finest Raptor Shows in the country. We also are improving our relationships with the town, with the library, the Arizona Science Center. We're putting on more and more programs for kids, including week-long camps this summer, seven hours per day for four days per week, and we think that is going to be something that the town embraces and enjoys. The other direction, okay. And this is something that you might have heard about, but we are really proud of. Roger Naylor named the Raptor Show at the White Mountain Nature Center one of the top twenty-five things to do in Arizona in two thousand twenty-five. That was a big article in the Arizona Republic, and we are bringing him up here, June fourteenth. You'll want to see that presentation, and the text and pictures that you see there, I am, we printed one of these to put up in the nature center, and if the town would like, hopefully that's right side up, we printed another one for the town, and this is for you to put up in the hallway or wherever you want, if you'd like to celebrate the fact that you have something here in Pinetop that is one of the top twenty-five things to do. Roger Naylor is an author and known travel writer, lots of articles in the Arizona Republic. So that's basically where we are and where we're headed. I am happy to answer questions. Oh, one more thing, came from Disney. You have to know what people are enjoying and what they're not enjoying, so that you can rotate out displays that maybe not be performing and know which displays are really performing. So our new displays are able to be recovered with different topics, and we can do that for a very low price, so we plan to rejuvenate and redo the entire display structure three times a year, maybe four, if we can do it. And the way we'll know which things people are excited about is, as people come into the nature center, each person will be given a token, White Mountain Nature Center, and on the back it says, My Favorite, and there will be boxes like this all over the displays. Every display will have one, so if that display was your favorite, the black bear, you drop in your token. We look at the tokens every week, and then we'll start to know which displays we want to keep and which ones we want to rotate out. So a thinking about the guest being in charge, the guest being in control of their experience, that is the mentality that's going to be at the nature center moving forward, and we believe that that's going to be a boon to us and the town over time. We already think we're helping, and we think we're going to help a lot more in the coming year. That's what I have.
Thank you, John. That was an incredible presentation. I really congratulate you guys on your successes, and we look forward to the future successes. And yes, I'm sure we can find a place for that.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind just leaving it with somebody, with Christie, and
Okay.
we'll make sure that that gets displayed someplace. Are there any other questions or comments for John? Counselor Smith?
Way to go, John.
Oh, thank you.
It's a great show, too. Are you going to increase the audience size?
Oh, man, that's what we would really like to do. We're working on ways to do that. The guardians, if they bring in some nice-sized donations, yes, we would love to increase audience size and maybe someday add a couple more Raptors to the show. What we have now is incredible, and I forgot to mention it, but this is really important. We are very close to bringing our bald eagle out for presentations. It's taken two years, but this will be one of the very few bald eagles that is not restrained or held by leashes. She will be free-flying. There are very few free-flight bald eagles for people to see, and she is incredible. So that's coming up, we hope, this summer, so we probably will need more space, which is a good problem to have.
Anything else? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, it's great what you're doing. I, so what is the cost, and is that still done online and payment done online then? Is that how that's?
We're charging two dollars and fifty cents right now. Once again, Disney demand pricing, so we will go to three fifty in April, and then in the peak season, we'll go to five dollars a person, and then it'll drop back down shoulder season and off-season again, back down to two fifty. So we've got that laid out for the whole year, and we think people are going to be okay with it. The feedback we're getting is, the two fifty is literally nothing, they're asking why we're not charging more, but we'll do it in stages and as the demand suggests that that's the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Turner?
I just want to thank John for coming in. I got this job in November, and I heard about the financial situation, I think, the very next day, and it was turned around by you and your board and your volunteers and your guardians and your angels within weeks, and I didn't think it was fair for me to come in and report that, so that's why I asked you to come in with some of your folks here. Tremendous amount of work in a very short amount of time, and looks good for the future here, too, so thank you.
Yeah, we literally applied for four separate mortgage loans from different banks, and even a guy in Phoenix that said, well, I'll give you the money, you don't have to sign anything, nobody's ever cheated me before. We didn't go with him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you for being here, John, we appreciate it. We'll look forward to great things.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I'm sure we can find a home.
Congratulations.
We'll go ahead and move on then to item D three, which is Discussion and Consideration of Resolution number twenty-five dash seventeen seventy, approving the First Amendment to the License Agreement between Arizona Water Company and the Town of Pinetop Lakeside. Chief Barnes.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is an amendment to a license agreement that was originally signed back in two thousand two, approved by the Town Council with the Arizona Water Company. Back then, it authorized us to construct a hundred-foot communications tower and operated on their site. Over the past ten years or so, that site's been backed up by battery backup, so if we have outage in that area, it'll hold for a certain period of time before it takes down the equipment on that tower, so we've, more and more, after, sometimes these storms that we get through here, longer and longer in downtime, so our goal is to take out all the battery backup equipment and replace it with a propane generator, a ten KW propane generator. So what we're asking for is for Council to approve us to take out the existing battery backup equipment, put in the generator, so that keeps that site up for extended outages, so. Finance-wise, cost of town will be five hundred dollars upon execution of the agreement, and then a hundred dollars a year thereafter. And the generator that we are putting on that, that site is already purchased by the town and no cost to us at this point, so.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or clarifications?
Do we already have, the town already has the generator to go there, or?
Yes, sir. It was purchased, I believe, last year. We've had it for a bit, so.
Okay. Counselor Heiser?
I move to adopt Resolution number twenty-five seventeen seventy, entering into a First Amendment to the License Agreement with Arizona Water Company, License ZOR, and the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, License E, and authorize the Town Manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion to second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your work on this, too. Final item on our agenda tonight is item D four, which is Town Council and Town Manager Monthly Liaison Reports. I will start tonight with Counsel Ferno.
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Counselor Smith.
Just a real quick one, the, we have finalized the seven hundred and sixteen miles of the Arizona Alpine Trail. All the trails and tracks have been approved by the Forest Service, which is a major approval process to make sure that it's all in their travel management plan, which, actually, City Greaves didn't have one for nineteen years, and so they got it this year, so we're, and we've been helping on our tracks, help the Forest Service discover where their maps are incorrect, which they are. They, sometimes their maps show a trail, it doesn't exist, and so we've been correcting some of those, and we've got another one Monday we're going to go out and do. So it's, it's, it's moving along very nicely, thank you.
I would just like to congratulate you. I know that's been a labor of love for you, but also a lot of work, so congratulations on all your accomplishments there. I know you've got a great team working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just a couple of little things. So the Museum and Historical Society is still looking for volunteers for their board and positions. They should open up around April eighth. Also, as far as Blue Ridge High School, Mr. Ryan Grace, who is currently the elementary school principal, will be the new Blue Ridge High School principal next year. The current one, Lauren Webb, is, he's retiring, so anyway, that's new. And Blue Ridge High School Performing Arts is presenting Into the Woods. That starts actually tonight. In fact, we'll get done in time. You can run over there probably and catch the first one. It goes February twentieth and twenty-first, seven PM, Saturday, the twenty-second at two PM, and then again, February twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at seven PM, and March first, which is a Saturday, at two PM again. I'm sure it'll be great, like the last several have been, so I would encourage everyone to attend that. I think it's five dollars for admission.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Counselor Heiser?
Okay, nothing to report.
Counselor Phillips?
Went to the Humane Society meeting yesterday. They're still struggling with staffing issues, so if anyone knows anyone looking for work, they're looking for employees over there, and they also are looking for donations for a washer and dryer, if anyone knows any that are operational that they would like to donate. that are operational that they would like to donate. The Humane Society could use them. Other than that, that's about it.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
I'm going to start with the Pinetop Lakeside Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the new chamber is 14 months into existence, and the board membership is evolving, and the membership is learning how to interact with the board and the president. At the end of last year, there are 168 members out of the 600 businesses here. There's still memberships that we could go out and solicit. But right now, like most organizations, we're out soliciting and collecting dues for 2025. So we don't really know how many members we have today until that effort is completed. Hired a couple of part-time administrative people, mainly in communications and marketing, to help us move forward. Big news, I think, is upcoming event. We have a big event coming up this fall. We've got the September 26th to 28th Artist, Fall Artisan Festival. It was not held last year because the chamber was new and we were understaffed. And now we have about 13, 14 members on the board. We've got the 168 members in our membership, and we have a commitment to hold the event again at the orchard. We're going to be announcing a title sponsor soon. Cleaning up some paperwork there. As far as activities at the fair, we've got, I think you mentioned at the last meeting, Mayor, Ray Philippine, who is a well-known carver of predominantly pumpkins. He's going to be putting on a daily, probably an hourly, display based on age of kids and adults who are going to be participating and training them how to do carvings. We're looking for musical talent, any onstage entertainment. So if anybody has any ideas, be glad to hear those. What we're looking at right now is offering the vendor booths to the chamber members and then opening it up to everyone else on April 1st. Booths are going to be about $150. That hasn't been totally nailed down yet. And thinking for attendance is like five bucks for the weekend, and you get a wristband or something to identify that you've already paid. And lastly, with the chamber, the color on on October 11th, the chamber's still looking to that, pull that off with some support from the town on the cleanup. I'm still not a big fan of that, but people seem to have a lot of fun that are fans of it, so here we are. I don't know how people drive their vehicles home after that. The community center, the last meeting was January 24th, so it's been a while. The next one is the end of the month. Again, like most organizations, the community center's looking at how to increase the number of meals sold every, every month. The minimum expected is about 417, and they're hitting that pretty well, but they like to exceed those numbers. Might mention that the chamber is going to be, excuse me, the counselors here are going to be serving lunch later this month on the, on the 26th?
7th.
27th, thank you. If you're around about town and you want a good lunch and not spend a lot of money, they could use your help. The work on the roof is ongoing. It started last month. It's about, it was predicted to be a six-week project, which means the roof should be high and dry by the end of March. And after that, there's some ceiling repairs that have to be done in the kitchen. I've got a bunch of notes here on the nature center, but after John's presentation, I'm just going to pass by those. The diorama is great. I was talking to John about the display board with the donors, and it's all digital. It's really, it's really great to go in there. So if you haven't been in there in a while, there's been a lot of changes. It's really been improved, and once the interaction things start happening, you guys are doing a lot of good work there. So thanks. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Turner. I appreciate that. I've just got a couple of things to report. Keith and I traveled down to the legislature again last week to continue navigating against HCR 2021, which would impact our sales tax on food for home consumption. We are, we were joined down there by about 20, 24 other mayors or council members. We had quite a delegation down there and spoke at their Ways and Means Committee hearing. Anyway, we're going to continue the fight. I think it's still a fight. Couple of fun things. The Blue Ridge Scholarship Fund is having their annual golf tournament at White Mountain Country Club on Saturday, May 3rd. That's always a lot of fun, and you don't get to golf at White Mountain Country Club very often, so I hope people will join us. And on May 17th, we're going to have Taste of the Mountain. We've got about 18 area restaurants that will offer sampling of their wares. That will be held at Camp Grace, so we're really looking forward to that as well. So put those on your calendar. It's a really good cause. That's all I have to report. Keith, what do you have to add tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Just a few things to remind you about. On the 24th of February, we have our employee appreciation dinner. That'll be next Monday. We have 118 that are RSVP from our staff and spouses and such. We're excited, and I'd like to thank everybody that's worked so hard to put this together. Every year, they do such a good job. It's a good time for us to come together, recognize those that have their 5, 10, 15, or longer plaques that they'll receive. And it's a good opportunity to recognize our employees and thank them for all the work that they do. We've been working on a letter. Apologize that it hadn't gone out yet. We made some changes to it. The letter, I think we've shared it with you, about our, the mayor wrote a letter to encourage and remind citizens that cleaning up their properties and creating defensive space around their homes is not an optional thing. It's a requirement. It's in our town code. And so we're reminding citizens of that. We're included in that letter that will go out, wildfire evacuation plan and how to prepare your home for a wildfire. So, and then one of the things that delayed us was putting together a flyer and a plan to offer to citizens to kind of help spur this on, a 10-day period in March where they can take, bring their green waste to the collection center for free. And so hopefully that will help spur people to go out and recognize that we have a threat and that they need to, not just, you know, I listened to a presentation at Wamboree yesterday from the fire department, Timber Mesa Emergency Management from Navajo County. And I think people understood it, but I'm not sure that they really understood it, you know? This is, everybody needs to go home and look at their property and see what needs to be there and be taken out because it could be us someday. So a special edition of the Talk of the Town will go out, and he's working on that. We talked about that today because we wanted to start driving this message before the letter actually makes it to people. We're working with a contractor to, because it's like, it's a lot of, a lot of envelopes and paper getting folded and mailed out, so. Also, real quick budget work session on March the 4th at 9:00 AM. That will begin here in this, in this room. And then it's, on April 12th is the Darren Reed fundraiser. I know the councils, I think several, have expressed an interest to attend. We still have some seats available. We have two tables, but it's a very worthwhile event to help sponsor. They do a lot of good in our, in our community, and it reminds us of Darren Reed and his sacrifice. Kevin and I, that was our third month working for the town when that one happened, and that was, that was a long night and a long week and very sad. So anyways, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Seeing no other business tonight, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks for being here.